This meeting is the November 1st meeting of the Board of Selectmen, 7:00 PM, Meeting Room 1. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and application. Also, please remember that donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council of Aging and the Public Library. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Robertson will go ahead and lead us in the prayer tonight.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our lives with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selfishness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among those who provide the many services that make us all, that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment to this office and to our responsibility. And especially, we lift up our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve and that may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Okay. As you see, I am not Ron Clark. Ron had a work commitment this evening and proceeded to get himself stuck in all sorts of traffic, so last I knew he was giving up on that meeting and is fighting his way back on traffic again. So, let's see. Now we'll go to citizen participation. This is a section we hold beginning of each meeting to allow members of the public to go ahead and address the board. We do ask that if you do have something and need to get across to us, that if you could keep it at three minutes so other people, because we really have a huge crowd here tonight. So, is there anybody that would like to go ahead and address the board and public participation?
Scott.
You've got to slow down.
Seeing none, I guess we will actually move on and we'll get to, we have an application for common particular license, New England Retail Development, also known as for Subway.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Rosenlund. I'm with New England Farms and New England Retail Development. We built a second location on New England Farms, as you know, on the other side of town on North Main Street recently, and we are now asking for permission to put a Subway restaurant inside the location. So currently, there was a location right down the street, a little bit further down the road, a Subway restaurant that we bought and plan on moving it into our new location. So tonight's hearing is just for the common vic for that.
So the Subway that's in the Cornerstones Plaza is going to be...
It's now closed, yep.
...closing and you're going to reopen it in New England Farms.
Correct, yes. Yep, better location and I think it's, yeah, it's a win-win.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second that. That's a great spot.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Anybody have any questions? It's going to be full service, everything that was at a regular, every other Subway you'll have there also?
Yep, same things. Probably expanded hours a little bit. I think they opened at like eight in the morning. We're going to open at seven if that's okay, but other than that, everything's the same.
That shouldn't be a problem, should it, Mrs. Michael? Okay. So you're going to have breakfast-type sandwiches?
Yes, yep, correct, yep.
Okay. Anything further? That case, go for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, it's a unanimous vote. And thank you very much and good luck with that.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Great spot.
Thank you.
All right. We're rolling right along. Town Administrator, general updates.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Hi, Griffin. Is that working? Can you hear me? Project, Michael, project.
Project. All right. Here we go. What I want to do is start off by talking about the proposed FY '18 forecast as well as the additional nine years to make our 10-year forecast that we've been doing for the last several years. You guys have all seen this document before. Basically, it's broken down into three main sections. The top third is the revenue that comes into the town. The middle two-thirds is fixed expenses and then the bottom third is a combination of the funds that are distributed between the general government and the school district as well as our continued OPED unfunded liability, so that you have that and you're aware of that. So what I'm going to be talking about tonight is the projected budget for FY '18. This is in sum a little bit higher, actually significantly higher than what our projections were a year ago. As we make these projections, there are some things that are beyond our control, how fast we have certain development in town, what other third parties are doing, like Old Colony Vote Tech, and what their rates are going up and/or whatever the state does. So to start off with, last year, when we looked at these projections, we anticipated that we were going to be generating 37, I'm sorry, $37.8 million. If you look in the top third, you see a total of $39.235 million. Now, a couple things to bring to your attention. The first is that this now includes the elementary school debt service. Our debt service payments are level service payments that we've done over 20 years to make sure that everyone understood these were constant payments over that time period, are running about $1.19 million. However, due to prior actions the board has taken through some solar projects, you agreed to reduce that debt service down by 100,000. So what you see in here is that net number minus the $100,000 for our debt service, which is about the seventh or eighth line down where it's in italics, the elementary excluded debt minus $100,000 that comes from capital. So that $1.09 million is added to our tax levy and that is what we then work our tax rates off of, which we'll be doing at our next meeting on November 15th. But that's one of the reasons why the number is significantly larger. The second is we took our state aid from last year and we took what was actually given, this is the forecast of the $11.84 million. We took what we actually received in revenue and we increased that by half a percent. Last year, we had about $48,000 in net state aid in addition to the year before, from the year before. The prior year, we actually had a deficit, so we're conservatively using a half a percent. I want to emphasize that that may eventually turn out to be too liberal, given how the state budget is right now and they're behind the year-to-date target numbers for collecting revenue and the governor is going to have to be making some cuts. He will not be making cuts to local aid, but I just want to, as I talk to you right now, just make sure you recognize that that number is a half a percent and I am pushing that a little bit, given some of the constraints the towns under right now, particularly with the schools, and I'm hoping that the state does come in with the half a percent more in net revenue. And again, that's what we received last year, so that is the metric that I'm using to justify We've also received some more money in our meals tax. We budgeted in here $108,692, so that has gone up from the previous year. So what we're looking at, and again, this includes the debt service, is a $39.2 million in revenue coming into the town for FY '18. Any questions with that? Now to get to the expense side, our first tranche of expenses have to do with our cherry sheet and overlay account. So the first three are cherry sheet direct costs to the town that are taken off of what the state gives us. We also increased those expenses by a half a percent above what they were last year, what the actual numbers are. Again, you know, we start with projections and then we have to deal with what the actuals are. So that did increase those numbers. So we're looking at $1.2 million to, and other amounts to be raised, whether it's for non-educational or charter tuition or mosquito control, which are some of the other items that fall under that state aid number.
Question, Michael. Cherry sheet assessment for, which contains the charter school tuition. Basically, students that go into charter schools, the state, even though they give us money, they take that money back. Do we know what percentage of those total assessments are due to charter school enrollment? Like for FY '17, we have 519,098. Do we know what percentage of that was strictly because of charter schools?
I do. I just don't have that sheet in front of me, but I do have the backup for that. The majority of that was.
I was going to say, just approximately, we're looking at like 80%?
I want to say 90% of that money was charter school and I think there was one other school-related cost.
So if you take the 90, approximately 90 for FY '18, that would be 540,000, which is basically what's targeted for, you know, the town and probably would go to the school that we had to pay back to the state before it even gets to the school.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is the funds that we transfer to the capital stabilization fund. And with those funds, those end up paying for, that'll pay for the fire station, the engines, it's paying the debt service for that. For this year, it's about almost a million dollars for that debt service. In addition to that, we still have some capital leases that were previously approved by the town, a little over $200,000. Out of this $2.6 million also comes the $100,000, which offsets the school cost that I mentioned previously, as well as funding our other capital projects that we have in town. At some point, the town meeting has already authorized the middle high school roof boilers and school accelerated repair project. That bonding will be paid for out of this fund as well, and then when we get to build the new police station, that will also be paid out of this fund. And this, with the capital outlay program, this is what we put in about our 10-year capital plan, that is, that we use that money to spend every year. Currently, right now, the target for the, our financial forecast is that it should be about 10% of our revenue. Now again, that's 10% of our revenue minus the debt exclusion. We're about 6.8%, 6.9% towards that target. So we're not quite there, but we're heading in the right direction in small incremental pieces.
And that's for the general fund, general stabilization fund?
That's for the capital stabilization fund. The general stabilization fund is 5%.
And where are we at with that approximately?
That we have met.
So that's why we can get away with just a small 25,000 addition each year, this year, in the old years.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, which gets into the next item exactly. So that, exactly, that covers that item as well. We do with the North Carver Water District, 50% of the district improvement financing, new growth, and recurring valuation continues to go to help offset the North Carver Water District. But as you know, we, the town is subsidizing that district and we're putting in several hundred thousand dollars out of our free cash annually to balance that until we get the additional development in North Carver. We have our compensated absentee liability fund that was started two years ago at the recommendation of our auditors. And then the OPED trust fund will be putting in, or proposed to put in, $170,000 into that this year. That is $25,000 above what it was last year. And that's the sequence we have right now is, you know, although we still owe $44 million as our accrued liability and there's no way we can come up with that amount of money, this is what our finance plans call for, to slowly start to incrementally address this. And we'll be putting some more money in there with our free cash when we have availability of that to push that into helping to offset our OPED trust fund, which again is a huge From there, what I want to talk about is focus on, it's the Old Colony Vote Tech School, which is $1.146 million. Students from Carver do go to that school. We really don't have any direct saying how their budget is put together, except that it does fulfill, you know, a certain educational need in all towns, that towns then have these regional Vote Tech Schools. This number is based upon what our understanding of the average, the average number of students that go there annually are times their tuition rate, and in there is also built into a 5% inflation rate because their rates go up every year for the tuition. I want to spend some time with that because it's one of those categories that all of a sudden, if, you know, an additional above the norm five students go in there, the tuition is significant. It's about $12,300 per student. So with a couple extra students, that number can grow real quick. Right now, we're averaging about 93 students in there. But again, it's one of those items that we can budget for what the average is and what we know, but in any particular year, that could change based upon students wanting to go there versus staying in Carver for whatever reason it may be. Or students that are already in that school that live in other towns but move into Carver, then Carver would pick up the bill for that tuition.
What's the limit of, like, Carver students that could enroll in Old Colony in a particular year? I mean, could we do it that way or has the averages been working out for us?
I think there's an allocation that each town has, but the allocation is, has some flexibility.
Okay.
I'm not sure we can actually limit it if, and I think if a student needs education...
Not every student who applies is accepted. So there is a cap. I don't think it's ever been more than 25 or 26 kids in a year.
Okay.
But there's four grades, so we could in theory have upwards of 100.
Oh.
But consistently, we're, if you look at the last five years...
Should he be sitting next to the microphone?
It's 93, 94, 93, 90. That numbers are pretty consistent.
Okay, so the average is a pretty consistent...
Scott, could you go ahead and, yeah, could you please? That way the people at home can hear you. And if you wouldn't mind repeating that, please.
Sorry, Scott.
Not a problem. Scott Neef, Superintendent of Carver Public Schools. So I have to investigate the contract in terms of what the cap is. Historically, as being the principal at the middle high school and as an administrator there for the past 15 years, historically, it's around between 21 and 25 students each year who are accepted. And our number for, and obviously, there's four grades, so consistently, we've had, you know, between 90 and 95 students. And if you look over the last five years, which I think we looked at, the most we've had enrolled in any one year was 95. But 93 has been pretty, it's a good number to use. I think it's, I think it's a very consistent number to use.
Thank you.
And again, the point here is, you know, we're using averages where we can. We're using rolling three-year averages and five-year averages as we use to create some of these numbers, but if there is some type of an anomaly, it will impact the budget. I don't anticipate that, but I just want you to be aware of it. So on the top, where we had the debt exclusion come in for the $1.92,000, $1,092,300, that is then taken away on the expense side, so that it's pretty much a wash. The last item, before we get to the total of all fixed expenses, is the snow and ice Last year, town meeting and the board voted to move that up by $25,000 plus an additional 5,000, a 5%. So that got us to the 235. This year and in future years, we're proposing to increase that by 5% a year. I think everyone knows that our budget is generally double that every year, sometimes almost triple that two years ago. So this item is significantly underfunded, but we try to address it. We're trying to show some financial discipline by slowly moving that up. There's no way we could fit in the additional quarter million dollars to make that budget whole right now because that would have some significant impact on the schools or public safety, whatever it may be. So this is an attempt for us to acknowledge that it's short and for us to slowly start to build that up. We're unable to solve all our problems day one, but we want to start to address those over time. So this gives us a total available revenue of $32.38 million. With that, that's a 2.2% increase over last year's revenue that we had projected. This year, we had projected coming in at 1.48% in new revenue. So again, this is 2.2, so we did exceed our revenue projections for this fiscal year. Then using the formula that was previously agreed to, the school received 70.3% of that available revenue and the town, general government receives 29.7. Therefore, the school's budget is recommended would be $22,769,286. That, and again, just going back to last year's forecast, last year's forecast was $22.6 million. So that extra seven tenths of a percent, you know, yielded about another $160,000, $70,000 for the school. On the town side, we're looking at $9.9619,456 is what the town's portion of the available revenue would be.
Question though. For what you've got is for the total expenditures, it's actually going to be higher than that because we don't have any health insurance factored in there yet, correct?
So I did leave those, I'm sorry, would you repeat that question?
Well, the fact that, you know, under the, under the budget, I don't see where we have accounted for even town-side health benefits. I mean, because we're, right now, we're not, we haven't gone, been able to go to the town wide yet, and I don't see that happening for FY '18, the way things are going right now, given contracts and whatnot. So basically, the town side is going to be less than that 9.6 because at the very least, we're going to have health costs coming out of that.
So at this point in this, for this process, where we are today, although Superintendent Neef and I have been reading, meeting on a regular basis to look at some type of a combined facilities, to look at potential IT synergies, to look at possibility of healthcare, none of those are included as an expense as part of this budget. What that means is whether it's the town or the school is, with their fixed number, we need to incorporate those costs within our own budgets. Now I did leave the four lines above there for healthcare, property liability insurance, facilities, and IT. Those are all blank. I think the intention is that we will get to having those items above the line at some point. If we are successful in moving that forward with the superintendent I and the school committee and the selectmen agree with our recommendations when they come out, then the easiest thing to do would be to extract those numbers and then just plug them up there because it would have no harm or foul to the, no harm or benefit to either department if it was put up there at that point as that's a fixed number. But I think, just to clearly answer your question, Alan, I did not put any numbers above there. I've left all healthcare and all facilities within, whether it's a school or the town, until we can come up with a proposal that works for all sides.
Right. And I want to make sure that got out there so people, you know, at home that are hearing this, don't take those numbers as locked in, that there could be some variability depending on how things transpire as far as town-wide.
Correct. That could happen, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I just want to point out the last three lines because I think this continues to show some of the success the board's had with some previous tough decisions you've made, is that prior to any of the healthcare reform that the Board of Selectmen initiated, back when you had your last OPED analysis, the town's liability on July 1st, 2012 was $58.5 billion. Due to those changes you made, as of 7/115 last year, it had dropped by $13 million to $44 million. I do believe now that the legislation has passed with some of the additional healthcare reform that was approved by town meeting and unanimously by the unions, then in our next actuarian report, as including some of the contract negotiations that have already been done, is that that number will start to slowly drop again too. So we will see another tranche of that move, not to the extent of $13 million being taken off, but you will see some movement in the next evaluation. So with that, what is proposed for the board is for you to, this would be completing step one of our budget process, would be for you to accept this 10-year forecast as the forecast that will move forward to town meeting. Keep in mind that throughout the year, there are some ebbs and flows that happen in this. You know, we're doing this prior to the state budget coming out. I think when we did it last year, we were off less than a fraction of a percent. There will be some changes. If there are any significant changes, then we will obviously need to readdress those, but it's unlikely that there will be significant changes going forward.
All right. I'll take a, take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
I have one question, Michael. On the North Carver Water District, you're saying it's being funded by free cash until the development can work out.
That's my finger cross, I hope all the kids see that, yes.
I got where you were going with that, but is there enough, or what's the percentage of the free cash of our budget? Is there enough there to fund this continually?
Continually? Well, let me back up before I answer that question. The North Carver Water District was built by the town to encourage development up in the northern part of the town where the proposed urban renewal plan is going to go. And with that, the town has invested umpteen millions of dollars into the project. The North Carver Water District currently is generating enough revenue to cover its operational cost. So the day-to-day activities with the, with the water company that's overseeing that are being paid for by user fees. The challenge is, is the debt service that went in to actually build the complex, and there's not enough revenue to cover that. So that's where the town has to come in and subsidize that. This year is our peak year for the way the bonds were structured. Some of these bonds are 40 years, unfortunately. Some of these bonds are forty years, unfortunately. But this is our peak year as to how that has laid out. This year, we have enough money to cover the debt service on that. I don't have the exact number, but it's a few hundred thousand dollars. And every year, that becomes a risk that if you don't generate the free cash and the state D O R says you should have between three and five percent of free cash, and we met that target this year. Then that would be a problem in the future.
That basically was the question, so just what is the percentage?
So there could be a time where we do not have an ample amount of free cash to cover this and we would have to find some other way of funding it.
Okay.
I think right now, the way we've set up the budgets and everything, we hope that that's not going to be the case. But it's a good question because it could happen. Clearly, we're all hoping, and again, my fingers crossed, that we will have development down there as anticipated. That development will then create a different additional water usage needs. If there's additional expansion, we'll try to have the developer pick up those expenses. And at some point, it will, it will operate in, in the black. But until you get a large user down that area, it's not going to happen.
Right, that's, okay, yeah, answered the question. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anything, Alan, anything else?
I'm all set.
All right, see no further discussion. All those in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. And we have another unanimous vote.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just give you an update on our F Y seventeen budgets to date and our, and our certification of free cash. I, I guess my first question, everyone receives our monthly reports for our expenses. And I haven't heard any questions, so I'm assuming that's all good news because basically, as you see, everything is falling in line with where it should be with its trend. There are a couple minor items, animal control and a few dollars here that they were running a little bit over what our forecast should be for that. But overall, our F Y seventeen budgets are, are running as they should. So we're not foreseeing anything with that.
And please pass on to Meg, our appreciation, because that really helps out by helping us keep tabs on making sure the taxpayers' money is being spent the way it's supposed to be.
I will do that. As it relates to our free cash, we, we are moving forward with, with that at this point. And, you know, there's a couple of things that I want to bring to your attention is we did meet the target again. I was staying within the three to five percent this year, so that's three years in a row that's been done. Of our free cash, we have one million, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars that is from the bond premium for the fire station and for the, and for the, the fire engines. The fire station, the fire engine yielded a bond premium. If you may recall, at town meeting, I believe it was Article Three, we also had a bond premium from the sale of the elementary school bonds. I think it was eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And town meeting allocated that to go back into the school projects so you don't have to borrow as much. So that is what the outcome of that is and that, that's required by law. This one million, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which again is a bond premium for those bonds, will be recommended at town meeting to go back into the capital stabilization fund to pay for the debt service of those, those projects. So it'd help offset that debt service. In addition to that, we received a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars from FEMA for prior year snowstorms. Some of those snowstorms were back a couple of years. So this is money the town has to forward fund and wait for reimbursement from FEMA. And we did, we did receive some of that coming in.
So this was from the two thousand and fifteen storms then?
That's correct. That's correct. But other than that, those two anomalies, again, the, the, the bond amount for the premium and for the FEMA, we're pretty much in line with where our free cash is. I think in our last meeting, when we had it with the school committee and with the, the board of selectmen, we talked about setting up some additional funds that could be used for dealing with commodities or unforeseen anomalies in the budgets. And with that, I'm going to be proposing that we do move forward with, and I've done this in consultation with Scott and Neef superintendent, we are going to be bringing back a proposal to set up a, a Carver circuit breaker for special ed. That is an item that can, can actually decimate a school budget. And with that, the school has, knows during the year how many students they are actually assisting that have special needs. And they can forecast what the increased cost is going to be for those that are sent out of district for tuition increases from year over year. The challenge is, and if I'm repeating myself again, please let me know, but I just want to get this out there, is that all of a sudden, if the town of Carver receives three students moving into the town and each one of them require out-of-district placements, those placements can be over a hundred thousand dollars each. And the town has no choice but to do those. So you're looking at, you know, potentially three hundred thousand dollars for something like that to occur. If that occurs, and as Mr. Neef had presented at the last board of selectmen's meeting, they have an extremely tight budget right now, given how they've, they've had to readjust their, their budget. That three hundred thousand dollars, should that scenario happen, would require major cuts in existing services the school's offering, whether that's, whether that's labor or whether that's other programs that are being done. The school would have an obligation to do that. So by setting up this Carver circuit breaker for special ed and using free cash to, to supplement this, and I'm going to propose about a quarter million dollars of our free cash go into that, this would only be used when there was a situation where there wasn't enough money to cover an anomaly that the school wasn't aware of. And it would only be for that year. The following year, the school would have to build in the cost for the program the next year. But it's a way of trying to deal with these mid-year anomalies once the budget's set. So you're not forced to having some significant staff reduction mid-year, should something like that happen. So that is going to be being proposed out of our free cash. And we'll be looking at a couple other items similar to that. For example, utilities. When we look at our utility cost, we're looking at a three-year average and what those costs would be. And that's how we budget our, 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 put it, put in our forecast. However, if you have a winter like we had two years ago and that had sub-zero temperatures for forty-two days, and I hope that doesn't happen, then that would definitely eat into our heating bill and that would cause some additional strain on the budget that would lead into, you know, in essence, impacting personnel and cutting personnel for that. So this is also another good opportunity for using one-time money to set up an emergency fund specifically for utilities that would be able to be utilized by the school and the town in that unforeseen circumstance. Now again, this assumes that the, the budgets are properly budgeted at the beginning of the year based upon normal assumptions. And should there be, you know, a catastrophic heating or cooling or whatever season it is that impacts that and there wasn't money within that fund, this would be the item that could first be utilized. So we'll be bringing those forward probably in the, the January timeframe for you guys to consider as we move forward with the budget process. So that's, that's what I have as far as our budget updates. We've slated our annual town meeting to be Tuesday, April eleventh, and town elections are going to be April twenty-second. Any question on the budget stuff?
No, it was.
Hearing none, proceed. I'd like to give a quick update on the well behind town hall. We have installed the new equipment and the new pumps have been installed behind town hall. And I believe it is, we're waiting for the filter system program to come in, in the second week in November. And that filter system program's a green sand plus system. And then we'll have some significant flushing of the system. And hopefully, hopefully, after that all settles out, we will start to see much water that's clearer. Again, according to D E P, it's still safe, but it'll be clearer when this all gets done. So that, that is making some progress. You sure you don't want to talk about it? Kerry was going to give a speech on that, but I kind of, I kind of took it over. Sure. Okay. The update on the new elementary school, we're continuing to work with the new contractor, C T A. We've had two team meetings with our technical review committee, which includes Scott Neef, myself, former chief Harriman, John Deli Pascoli, and also Dave Singentoff. We'll be meeting with C T A on Thursday for our third meeting. And we've also had some site visits with them as well. So that is, there's a lot of oversight happening with that project right now, including I will be having a seven-thirty meeting tomorrow morning with them, but.
Well, then we just might as well spend the night here then.
Yeah, no, it's. The middle high school project, Scott, Neef and I had a conference call with M S B A and they are moving our project forward. And hopefully, that'll be on with the next, the next M S B A meeting to fund that. So that is progressing very positively. Again, I just want to remind everybody that we will be coming back to request additional funding to purchase the rooftop units, brand-new rooftop units. Since M S B A is going to pay to take them down, we don't want to put up fifteen, twenty-year-old pieces of equipment. We want to buy all new, put them up there. It'll save on our operation and our maintenance costs going forward. And that ticket will probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars, but it's, it's money well spent for them. So that is moving forward as well. An update on the field reconstruction at the middle high school. As we've talked about in the past, when the middle high school was built, the way the irrigation system was set up was that the well would feed into a treatment facility. The treatment facility would feed into a storage tank. The storage tank would feed into a pump. The pump would then fun, pump the water back out to the fields. D E P, under consent decree back in June of this year, told us we couldn't do that anymore. And as a result, the, the school was unable to, to irrigate the fields. And this was not the summer you wanted to not irrigate fields that sit on sand because they're not doing well at all. With that, Scott, Neef and I have been working with many, many people in the town to look at rebuilding some of those fields and providing new irrigation for that. The capital outlay committee has allocated funds to purchase two new wells that would be set aside just for irrigation, as well as some additional funding to offset some of the irrigation. We've been working with Gary Garriton, who, in the earth removal committee, and make peace through Gary's efforts, amongst many others too, is donating some significant material to the fields. We're receiving a hundred yards of crushed stone for the softball fields. We're receiving a hundred and twenty yards of infield mix for the two baseball fields. We're receiving a hundred yards of topsoil to redo the infield and adjust some areas in all of the fields that need some additional soil due to ditches or whatever it may be. Also, we have a local contractor who has agreed to come in and do some of the excavation. And his company builds fields and builds bog, so he has all the right equipment with the G P S so they can level out the infills of the baseball fields. And they're also going to be doing some of the mapping for where the irrigation will go. So you have a, a community-wide effort trying to help bring those fields back with everyone participating and trying to, to, to help out. So, so that's an ongoing effort. Anything else there to that, Scott? Did I miss anything?
Bob Arano.
Bob Arano.
Bob Arano.
Arano is also on the earth removal committee and he's the contractor that's agreed to assist with the tearing up the infield, which the infield has already been teared up. He's going to actually level that back out. One of the, the items we want to make sure is we're only going to plant new stuff right now where we do have some limited irrigation on the infield. We do have one sprinkler that can be used for that. But until we get the additional sprinklers and the wells in, we're not going to be planting any additional fields out back. But we do hope to do that first thing in the spring and try to bring back again some of this turf that has, that has died. Or gone dormant. Hopefully, it hasn't died. Hopefully, it's just dormant. Let's see, update on the fire station. We're still looking at a grand opening in December. There may be some slippage on the December tenth date, but for right now, let's still keep it penciled. And, you know, I want to talk about the good work that that committee's been doing right now. Bill Harriman, as you know, has been co-chairing that with me. But I will be quite honest, Bill's done most of the work. And I think I'm there as a figurehead at this point because he just takes the ball and run with it. But he's doing a great job with the rest of the committee. Most construction projects for buildings have anywhere from three to five percent of, of, of what their contingencies are usually spent through change orders. And three percent's usually really good, like exceptional, and five percent's more the norm. If you're over five percent, then you have to really think about this. When you look at what has happened on that project, whether it's unforeseen code issues or design changes, they're right now at one point seven nine percent. So again, three is great, and they're at one point seven nine percent. And that's really not going to change significantly because they're in the process of just wrapping, you know, a lot of the stuff up. So they, they've been doing a great job on making sure they're bringing that project in under budget. They are bringing it in under budget. They will be returning some money back to the town. And it's, it's, it's a great facility and I can't wait for you guys all to get over there and see, you know, once it's almost finished at this point. So again, kudos to them for all the hard work they're doing and I think the metrics are showing what a great job they're doing. I'm told also that the, the, the training facility will be done in two days. And, and so again, that's, that's just another major component of the whole project.
And that's been done by volunteers from the fire department themselves. All the electrical, all the painting on the inside, also the S C B A mock-up in there. We used to have one with just one floor, now it's multiple floors. So, and that was all done by the firefighters themselves.
Yep.
No cost to the town.
The, and I think that's a good point, Alan, as you bring up, is that, you know, I just mentioned Bill Harriman and, and members of the committee. But it's also been the men and women of the fire department that have donated countless hours of volunteer time, whether they may be an electrician and they're running wire to the building on their own for the burned building or whether, you know, they're painting in there or doing some of the small constructions, carpentry stuff for the burned building. They're putting in a lot, a lot of time. I know Madendorf, Dave.
Bob Madendorf.
Bob Madendorf has, has also been putting in a lot of time and effort as the union president.
Association president.
Association president. I, I, that was a big slip.
I've got to get you over to more of our meetings over there.
That's right, they are an association. They are not that you were. And Bob has been putting in a lot of effort in helping out with supplies for the facility as well. But again, it's a team effort. It really shows how well they work together and what they've been able to accomplish. they've been able to accomplish, because that project in any other town would be another $2 million for what they've done. And we know that for a fact, because a similar station just went out the bid, and it came in at about $2 million more than this one did. So they've, they've done a lot.
Amazing story.
My last update I have is on Route 58. Route 58, we had a meeting today with the contractor and Mass Highway. They anticipate getting everything done this year, I think you may have mentioned at a previous meeting, that due to the Verizon strike, we still have poles in the middle of the street, and they can't do the work with the poles in the middle of the street until they're moved. That being said, is, they're looking to come back by next May to do the final top coat of the whole roadway, to do the final top coat for all the sidewalks, with the exception of the downtown area, and to finish all the landscaping at that time. Their goal is to get everything else done before the winter freeze, so that includes the additional curbing that still needs to be put up and down the street, particularly around where the culverts were, and to come back and make sure that a base coat, of course, is installed in those areas as well. I think, as I said in a previous meeting, that is actually better for the town, because that way we can see how, if there's any frost heaves that may have occurred over the winter, and those can be corrected prior to the final base coat going down in May. So that's, that's where that project stands at this point.
Good job.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, I got one other thing.
Oh, good.
I need a vote of the board. When we send out our tax bills, we're going to be incorporating in those bills a one-page description of how the debt exclusion is being adjusted generically across the board to all bills. So it's almost an explanation, so when we do the debt exclusion for the school, it's going to impact everyone's taxes, we've known about that. It's going to be significantly lower than what people approved, but we would just want to take them through that math for a typical house. So I need the board to authorize the chairman or the vice chairman to approve that, that document, one-page explanation that will go into the tax bills. That's the state law, you have to prove if there's anything added to the tax bill, so that it's been done by the board.
I think the more information that hits the taxpayers, the better. They have time to chew on it a little bit, so.
And we can vote on that, even though it's not on the agenda?
I'm tying that into my update for the, the 10-year revenue forecast, because they have to send the taxes out as part of the revenue.
Okay, then you feel comfortable we're okay?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to approve, based on Michael saying we're okay.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll have a second, yeah.
We have a motion made and seconded, and any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Another unanimous vote. And during Michael's whole dissertation, my computer decided to update everything.
He probably hit the button.
I didn't touch anything. So. Well, yeah, I know, we're down to Board of Selectment stuff, but.
So you're updated.
Uh, yeah, but now I can't get in, because this is Ron's computer, and I don't know his password. So, well, I'll just go without it.
All right.
All right, this brings us up to Board of Selectment notes. David, with your approval, I'm going to start with ladies first. So.
Alan?
Um, I just want to say that this is last week before, we have a big vote next week, so I just want to encourage everybody to go out and vote, and I wish all the candidates, including Sarah, much luck. It's hard work to run for any office, even on the local level. So I just really wish that everybody does get out to vote, but more importantly, this has been a very contentious election on the national level, and I just pray to the citizens of Carver that once the votes are in, that we can all put our differences aside. My whole life of voting have seen such disagreement amongst friends, family, and everybody in between, and I just hope that we as a country can come together and support whoever shall win. So God bless America, and good luck to the candidates.
Sarah?
Thank you, and I concur with you, Helen, and I appreciate what you said. Voting is really important. It really, really is important, and I hope a lot of people are taking advantage of early voting. I've met a lot of people who've said they have, and it's such an easy process, no long lines, they're in and out, so that's, that's a good thing. I also wanted to thank Gary Garretson and Bobby Arano for their donations, the work that they're, the material they're supplying and the, and the work for the school. And, Michael, thank you for mentioning their names. I know some, sometimes people do that, they don't really want their names out there, but I think it's good for people to know. And also the members of the fire department for their hard work, saved us all a lot of money. So, yes, please vote, and that's it.
David?
Yep. I also wanted to say to please vote, but a couple days after vote day is Veterans Day. And if you have a veteran in your family, or in your community, a pat on the back, some recognition goes an awful long way, and they're the reason that we are able to vote, so please find somebody and thank them. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I, I have some notes that the real chairman wanted me to pass on, but I'm going to do mine first. And I'd also like to reiterate, Election Day is November 8th. However, to help make things easier for you, the state of Massachusetts does have early voting, we have early voting in Carver. You can still vote here in Town Hall on Wednesday and Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then Friday, November 4th, will be your last day for early voting, which will be 8:00 a.m. to noon. And you just come in the main door, and there's nice signs that point you down, you'll be going downstairs, and I believe that's being done in Meeting Room 4. So you get down to the bottom of the stairs, take a left, and you'll be able to find it. So if you can't make it on Tuesday, the 8th, please, please, please get out there and go ahead and vote early, so your vote can be counted. Also, reminder, we are starting to get into closer to the holiday season, so keep those less fortunate than yourselves in mind, and do go ahead and make donations for the food pantry at either Council of Aging or the library. Now we'll get on to Mr. Clark's inputs, which he had to correct a couple of times. Thursday night, there's a new records law training over at Plymouth North High School in Plymouth. Also, Area 58 is having a open house, and that is actually going to be Saturday, December 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So it's a good chance to stop on in and take a look around at their facilities, and if you want to learn how to, go ahead and get camera equipment out and produce your own shows, I'm sure they'd be glad to tell you about that also. It's a good chance, you know, a good learning opportunity. As David said, Veterans Day is Friday, November 11th. We do have a lot of veterans in town, so just, you know, if you see one of them, just thank you, would be nice, and, you know, just keep them in your thoughts, because, you know, they sacrificed a lot, so we have the liberties that we do have. Carver Lions will be collecting used eyeglasses in the lobby of the high school on Election Day. There'll be a box there to place them in as you go in to vote. Then they'll be washed and reconditioned and adjusted, so that others who can't afford them can go ahead and get some benefit out of them, so that's a really good thing. And do want to wish Sarah good luck on Tuesday, you know, you've worked hard, and as Helen says, we, we all now know what it's like to run for at least a local office, and I imagine, you know, moving on up the scale, the ladder, so to speak, it's probably even more work, so. And finally, Shane Gives Thanks Incorporated, they have a craft show this Saturday at the high school cafeteria from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Their bake sale and craft tables are all sold out. And also, before we talked about Shane Gives Thanks possibly taking over the food pantry, they were trying to find someplace, and they looked at one spot, and it kind of fell through. However, it now looks like they have found a home in Carver Square, and more details will be coming forth. They have to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is, so it's not official yet, but they are very hopeful that they do have a new location. And also, on this one, Santa is for seniors, too. Once again, the Carver COA will be providing gifts to senior citizens in the local nursing homes, they've done this for a few years now, it's really a very good project. And this year's the nursing homes selected are Life Care Center of Plymouth and Golden Living. Residents of the nursing facilities often feel lonely, especially during the holiday season, so this is a good chance to bring them, you know, a little bit of joy and happiness on what could be sometimes a sad time, because sometimes, you know, unfortunately, some of these folks that are in there, their families don't bother to come to see them, so it can be very hard for them during that. So suggested items are puzzle books, large print if possible, word search books, personal care items, snacks or candy, shawls, shawls or lap blankets. And basically, we ask for your items to be wrapped, and please indicate if it's a gift for a man or a woman. And gifts can be dropped off at the Carver Council of Aging, 48 Lakeview Street, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And they'd like to have all the gifts in by Tuesday, December 13th. We also have some Great Elves that are available to pick up gifts, so if you have some gifts and you can't make it to the Council of Aging, please go ahead and just give a call, 508-866-4698, option 3, and they will get some elves out to go ahead and collect those gifts. And this will be mentioned at probably our next two board meetings also, because really think about this, it, you know, just takes a little time to go ahead and pick that up, but you can really bring a lot of happiness to people that don't have things to look forward to sometimes in those nursing homes.
So they're allowing candy this year?
That's what they have on the list.
You were thinking the same thing.
It says snacks, snacks or candy, so.
Go figure.
If you have a question, I would say swing by the Council of Aging, or give the call 866-4698 and double-check, option 3. So. And other than that, we don't have anything else under Selectment input. Now, we don't have, do we have, since my computer's gone, we don't have any other licenses, right?
No, we do not.
All right, what about the minutes for our last meeting, which was October?
9:29 and 10:04.
9:29, 10:04.
Motion to approve, 9:29.
Have a motion to approve, 9:29. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. How about the October meeting?
I need to abstain from that one, because I was.
You weren't there.
I was sick.
You didn't, you didn't get your hat.
I didn't get my hat.
It's in there.
It is.
Yep.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 4th.
I have motion.
And second.
A second, further discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? That'll be 3-0-1 abstention. And that's it, we do need an executive session tonight.
For dispatch.
Huh?
For dispatch.
For, for the dispatch unit. So you going to recuse yourself for that one, or are you going to? Huh?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I probably should, I don't know.
All right. All right, in that case, Sarah's going to recuse herself, and I have, still have a motion.
Why would she need to recuse for that?
That's what she feels she has to. So, do you want to read? Read the motion, please.
I sure will.
Thank you.
All right. Can we take this, or do you want them back?
Got my notes on them.
I'll make a motion to move to go into an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions, clerical DPW, dispatches, PEC, healthcare, police, and for non-union negotiations, and with all non-union personnel not under contract, and strategy for litigation and for purchase, exchange, lease of value of real estate that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held an open session, and to reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this will be a voice roll call vote, and again, as I said, this is mainly to discuss the dispatcher's contract, so Helen Marone?
Helen says aye.
David?
Says aye.
Alan Dunham says aye. We are adjourned for executive session, we'll reconvene at the conclusion to adjourn.